Members, starting from today, the Finance Committee will be holding twenty-one sessions of meetings for four days in a row to scrutinize the estimates for the year twenty twenty to twenty-one with the following purpose, making sure that the funds requested will not exceed the money needed for and carrying out all the policies. We have already formed a quorum, that is Chairman plus six members. At the start of each session, I will invite the relevant director bureau to give us some brief opening remarks. Then questions may be asked, please take your usual seat. Before the meeting, members submitted six thousand eight hundred written questions in relation to the estimates. The government has promised to provide written replies to three thousand three hundred of them. Before um before the relevant session, for the rest, the government will try its best to give answers before the twenty ninth of April. Depending on the number of members wishing to ask questions, I will determine the time allotted to each member. All questions must be directly related to the estimates. If you would like to follow up on any written replies, please cite the reply serial number in the right top right corner, for example, F S T B bracket F S zero zero one. If you cannot uh follow up on the written replies during this session, you may submit written supplementary questions and submit them to uh to the secretaries before the end of the meeting for the day. The administration will try to answer before the twenty ninth of April. When I finish with this sentence, you can press the button request to speak. Now I would like to invite the secretary to speak. Now you may press the button request to speak. Secretary, Mr. Lau, please give us your brief opening remarks.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, members. I will briefly introduce the estimates of expenditure from financial services and our key areas of work in the coming year. The allocation to the financial services branch and departments under its purview for twenty twenty twenty-one is about two point three billion dollars. In the coming year, we'll focus our work on safeguarding Hong Kong's financial stability on the one hand and promoting market development and enhancing financial cooperation with the mainland and other. In order to reinforce our status as an international financial center, safeguarding financial stability, we are committed to maintaining the stability of the financial system in Hong Kong. With COVID nineteen spreading across the globe, the number of confirmed cases has increased globally and locally. The situation has become very serious and put the worldwide economy under great pressure. Many international organizations' economists are pessimistic over the economic outlook and have warned about the risk of global recession this year. Under the influence of COVID nineteen and many other uncertainties in the global and local environments, the global and Hong Kong's financial markets have become more volatile and our economy has worsened abruptly. Nevertheless, our financial system remains resilient. Different facets, including the linked exchange rate system, continue to function effectively. Stress tests conducted by financial regulators indicate that even in extremely adverse situations, banks, intermediaries in the securities sector and insurers will still be able to meet the relevant regulatory requirements. Our financial system has withstood crisis one after another, and we believe that with a resilient regulatory regime, Hong Kong can cope with market volatility. In the coming year, the government and financial regulators will continue to closely monitor the financial market situation with a view to ensuring financial stability. Promoting market development, I'd like to give a brief account of our priorities. First, asset and wealth management. Following the introduction of a new open-ended fund company structure in July twenty eighteen, we're currently conducting the legislative exercise relating to the establishment of a limited partnerships regime for private equity funds such as to provide more options for funds to be set up in Hong Kong. The relevant bill was considered in March twenty twenty, pending passage by the legislature. In addition to attract more private equity funds to domicile and operate in Hong Kong, we also plan to provide tax concession for carried interest issued by private equity funds operating in Hong Kong subject to fulfillment of certain conditions. We'll consult the industry on the proposal and the relevant arrangement will be applicable starting from twenty twenty twenty-one upon completion of the legislative exercise. Second, the rapid development of the Exchange Trade Fund ETF market in recent years has brought new opportunities to the securities market in Hong Kong. In order to further strengthen the competitiveness of Hong Kong as an ETF listing platform, the government will expand the existing scope of the same duty on stock transfers waiver. For ETF-related transactions, to cover also those paid by market makers in the course of creating and redeeming ETF units listed in Hong Kong. This will reduce the overall cost of trading ETFs and hence attract ETF issues to large ETFs that track Hong Kong stocks. We plan to table development subsidiary legislation in the second quarter this year to give effect to the proposal. Moreover, we are further enhancing the mutual capital market access between Hong Kong and the mainland. With effect from the twenty eighth of October twenty nineteen, companies with weighted voting rights structure as listed in Hong Kong under the new listing regime of the Hong Kong Exchanges and Clearing Limited are included as eligible securities under self-bank trading of the Shanghai Hong Kong Stock Connect and the Shenzhen Hong Kong Stock Connect upon fulfillment of certain criteria. The government and regulators will continue to discuss with the relevant mainland authorities to cover more investment products in the mutual market access schemes in order to promote the collaboration and interaction between the two financial markets. To enhance Hong Kong's competitiveness as an international insurance hub and help the industry seize new opportunities, including those arising from the development of the Guangdong-Hong Kong Account Greater Bay Area and the Belgium Road Initiative, we introduced an amendment bill and the ethical for scrutiny in this legislative session and get started to other amendment bills in March twenty twenty. The amendment bills aim to serve the following purposes: first, to reduce by fifty percent the profit tax rate for all general reinsurance business of direct insurers, selected general insurance business of direct insurers and selected insurance procurer business, just to help promote the development of marine insurance, underwriting of specialty risks and high value-added marine surf maritime services. Second, establish a new regulatory regime which facilitates the issuance of insurance insurance-linked securities in Hong Kong and to expand the scope of insurable risks by captive insurers settled in Hong Kong. Thereby enriching the risk management tools available in our market and catering for the risk management needs of multinational companies respectively. Third, to enhance the structure for the supervision of insurance groups where the holding company for the group is incorporated in Hong Kong with a view to meeting international standards and establishing Hong Kong as a preferred base for the large insurance groups in Asia-Pacific. Secretary, please speed up. Now, we will continue to promote the development of fintech in Hong Kong on various funds, including expanding the applications of the faster payment scheme and creating conditions conducive to the development of the fintech ecosystem in Hong Kong. While striving to facilitate financial innovation, the government will also continue to work closely with financial regulators to protect the interests of the investing public. Last year, we saw the successful offering of our inaugural green bond under the government green bond program. We plan to issue a total of around sixty-six billion dollars green bonds in the five years commencing from this year. Having regard to the market situation, this will further consolidate and develop Hong Kong's position as a premier green finance hub in the region and attract more institutions to make use of our capital market for green financing and investing. To create room for fee reduction and a predominantly paperless mandatory profit and fund experience, the government is working with the M P F A to set up a E M P F platform to facilitate standardization, streamlining and automation of M P F scheme administration processes to maximize operational efficiency. The authority issued the request for proposal documents for the E M P F platform last December. With a view to awarding the tender second half of twenty twenty, subsequent to the result of the tendering success, it remains our target to have the E M P F platform ready by twenty twenty-two, the earliest, and the onboarding to the E M P F platform by all trustees by phases in the subsequent two to three years. To promote the further development of the retail bond market and encourage the financial sector to continue tapping the silver market, we plan to issue inflation-linked retail bond, I bond and silver bond again this year. Depending on the market conditions, the total issuance size of the two retail bonds will be less than thirteen billion dollars. The Hong Kong Monetary Authority will announce the details in due course. Thirdly, following the third meeting of the leading group for the development of the Guangdong-Hong Kong Macau Greater Bay Area, six finance-related measures were announced, covering areas such as personal banking services and insurance, among which Hong Kong M A has maintained close communication with the mainland authorities on the design of the wealth management contract scheme with a view to launching the scheme as early as possible. On the premise of ensuring proper management of risks and protection of investors, the scheme aims to enable citizens, I mean residents of Hong Kong many cities in Greater Bay Area to invest in wealth management products in each other's market. This will create more business opportunities for the financial industries of the two places and provide more choices of wealth management products for residents therein, thereby further facilitating the cross-bond flow and use of R M B and reinforcing Hong Kong's position as a hub for offshore R M B business. Especially intermediary for capital flowing in and out of the mainland. We draw on the successful experience of existing mutual market access scheme in devising arrangements. Last but not least, to ease the pressure on enterprises brought about by the economic downturn, the F S has announced the budget, the registration fees for all annual returns except for late delivery charged by the company's registry. It will wait for two years. This will benefit about one point four million companies and reduce related revenue by about two hundred and twelve million dollars in total. We introduced the proposed amendments to relevant subsidiary legislation into the legislature this quarter. Now, so my colleagues will be happy to answer any questions from members. You can start asking questions. We have about sixty minutes left, four minutes each covering both Q and A. When we have time left, then there will be a second round of questions. First, Kenneth Liu.
Thank you, Chair. I've got two questions. First of all, for the front page of the Financial Times, it is said that in the light of the outbreak of COVID nineteen, central banks, in particular the European central banks, they have already waived certain capital requirements of banks, say for example, some banks have been advised to stop giving out dividends and stop giving out bonus to the management. It is said that with the lowering of the capital requirements, there will be five trillion dollars available for loans. So the enterprises can get loans from banks. On the other hand, there is this idea, there is whether whether we can look at the financial assets requirements under requirement nine of the international standards. That is for the expected loss for trade receivables. Can that be suspended as well? Well, I want to know whether the regulators are considering such possible changes. And what about the implementation of requirement nine of the international standards for accounting, given the very poor economic outlook? That's my first question. Second question, there is in relation to F S T B bracket F S zero three zero. Well, I think um the secretary talked about um a new company structure in relation to asset and welfare and wealth management. But I'm disappointed because it is said that the Hong Kong M A would consider the matter. But then I know from the industry that the study has been going on for two to three years without any outcome, without any policy initiative. In particular, in relation to family office, there's been no policy suggestions concerning this matter in particular. So two questions here.
And Secretary Lau, will you take the first question or you'll leave it to H K M A? Well, I'll take talk about the family office first. Because we have a looking, we're exploring with different family office and early next year at the Asia Financial Forum, we have the seminar on family offices as well. So we are looking some kind of a tax exemption for them and see they see there's a room to provide a better environment. However, we need to explore in depth on the tax consequences, so we need more time to craft other proposals. And for the I F R S number nine, on the capital requirements and expected loss, I'll pass on to H K M A to supplement. Mister Chan from H K M A.
In terms of capital requirements for in this period, in response view of the epidemic, especially for the overall economy, we check the view that there is room as a need uh to create room for the banking sector to provide more support for the overall economy and companies as a whole. What we had implemented, for example, some kind of counter cyclical uh buffer. We had already reduced the buffer requirement twice and last year reduced from two point five to two. And more lately, we reduced further to one percent. And last Friday, we have launched another new measure for the regulator reserve have furthest slashed by half. And with all this measure in place, we hope that some banks will have more uh room to release more liquidity of for a commercial lending. However, we need to assure that this uh the banks would need to cooperate as well. So the H K M A have been uh set up some kind of platform with the banking sector to better cope with the needs of the S M Es. Besides this, and with the mortgage corporation on the loan, also some measures on loan guarantees. So at different levels, we do, okay, one sentence for the I F R S number nine. As floated by Kenneth Liu, would you consider it? I will take a look at it because there's a global arrangements as know that at a global level, a lot of the banks have been proposing this to the regulatory agencies and we will continue to monitor how it develops. Okay, now the time has passed. Next, Dr. Kiki Kwok.
Okay, I'm O three eight for the Hong Kong Growth Portfolio. Just now the secretary mentioned that the economy have come into a major stumbling block. So we need to be very prudent in making investment decision. In twenty sixteen, when we launched the Future Fund, the government have told us they need to set up this fund as to earn high investment returns through long-term investment, which will benefit the long-term development of Hong Kong. But out of the blue, we have now this Hong Kong Growth Portfolio, H K G P. That is quite mysterious. The H K G P, according to the document, it would not to, would not need to disclose it returns for five years. So it's a closed infrastructure and no question could be asked while carrying on the work. There's nothing special about this. Well, as we can see, there's four members in the governance committee, besides Mister Ronnie Chan and Tony Wong, Peter Wong from H S B C, and we have Professor Lo Chun Yee and Victor Feng. Well, they're also the vice chairman of the our Hong Kong Foundation. They're also the nationals as C P C C reps and also closely linked with the mainland. For example, they're also the councilman for the U S and China Council and have been called by the Congress as a unifying grenade frontline tool. I know there's a colorful cooperation in Professor Lau has mentioned in twenty seventeen. According to him, he hoped to build an international hub, working with Shenzhen, focusing on venture capital and innovation and set up a combined the Silicon Valley and Nasdaq and hoping have O P Os and hopefully to help to raise funds for new companies. Are we really helping the IT enterprise company or really for Hong Kong's future? Are you really investing for Hong Kong? You should take our two hundred twenty-two billion dollars of our taxpayers' money. There were no requirement, no reporting requirements for the next five years. This is a black box operation. How can we set aside such a huge amount of money when we Hong Kong is facing serious trouble? And now that you want it in first of five years and no one will know what will happen if five years time. And that time you will no longer be the secretary and maybe the C E will be get replaced as well. I remember Kerry Liu criticized John Zhang by saying that it was all ambiguous and lacked details in this blackboard operation. Why does current term in government in launching the H K G P have such a mysterious funding all in shambles? How you give account to the public? How can you tell this is not a blacklist operation? Why we're not disclosing results with on the after five years? Is there anything that Hong Kong people don't want to know? Two questions here. First, I would like to talk about H K G P. We had made it very clear that we'll invest in Hong project with a Hong Kong nexus. And usually they will have to be closely linked to the Hong Kong livelihood or the economy. Well, even though a lot of the blue chips are not even a Hong Kong enterprises, most of them are Chinese-owned enterprises. Well, what for the H S I stocks or the new economy stocks? It's inevitable that a trade and investment are linked to China. When we propose this Hong Kong nexus, we talk about the projects implemented by Hong Kong companies. Of course, it could be in different locations. However, uh we emphasize that it has to be related to uh to to Hong Kong. We have to consider the merits and also the nature of the projects, which hope to get a better returns from them. So whether it's a breakfast operation, definitely not. Uh for the uh typical private inquiry require long-term investment, we'll need longer time to realize, to achieve the investment returns. Thus, uh to think we come up with the suitable period to evaluate the performance and considering the public opinion, there is performance appraisal is important as well. So we have a duty to make a reasonable disclosure and we have adopted proposals of the committee that that after five years allow this larger investment project have time to operate before at this closing or disclosing the performance appraisal. So that and we're not expecting to see results within a short time of the establishment. So this five-year goal, it would seem is appropriate. So what if we, this fund come to trouble in five years' time? So who will be held responsible? What if we lost money and we spent all the twenty-five billion? Who will be responsible? You? The government will be responsible. Well, by then everyone will get replaced and the money will be spent. By now, by then you no love with secretary. And thank you, Chairman. Now that the global economy is entering a critical time and Hong Kong's economy expect to be very difficult in times ahead. And now the Hong Kong S M Es and lots of people notice a shock drop in income and come to great difficulty. And some banks had earlier have launched this principal moratorium and allowed the S M Es to get through this time. However, not all banks are on board. Well, in terms of financial system, what can government do to help the S M Es and even all companies to get through this? Can the H K M A discuss with all the banks to try to help the companies to have this principal moratorium? And a lot of people are facing a shock drop in income, have problem meeting their mortgage payments. And a lot of the people have told me that when, asked me whether the banks can allow the principal moratorium on mortgages or allow or H K M A issue clear guidelines to allow the public to um make less mortgage payments. That will help the public to weather the storm. And a lot of people have been chasing the secretary whether the cash can out come earlier. Because the ten thousand dollars is really for to meet the imminent need. And now you, it is claimed that you can register by July. Can you expedite it? Can you uh reuse the system instead of requiring new registration every time for the Hong Kong annuity plans are quite popular? And the public wonders, I wonder can we lower the minimum entry age instead of allowing to purchase the policy at the older age? That would help the public save more money. So four questions here. Secretary, make good use of the time. Okay, there are three questions here. On the cash handout scheme, we're using the quickest possible way. Before we announce the budget, we are working with the government departments and the banks and reference stakeholders to design the procedures and system requirements. So hopefully it could be ready in July. As for this quite whether this if that whether new registration will not be required, this is a good idea. Well, Hong Kong have very strict privacy laws. So for each kind of a handout scheme, the information received cannot be reused. And our system decide this time we will take note of this and maybe we upon getting the consent of the applicant, we hopefully we can have the system can reuse this personal data. So that we can achieve divisional smart Hong Kong. As for annuity plans, we see there's a demand for this. Even though some the annuity plan is really for seniors to up to apply. However, uh there are those offered by the private sector that have a lower entry age that after pay for ten years and allow you to draw on it in a later time, which will also offer a tax concession or tax allowances. As for S M Es or the mortgage payments, in this environment, we understand the public at a very heavy burden. The H K M A have been discussing with the banks and just a few days ago with Asia Press release and and have achieved understanding with the banks and a lot of banks have come on board with the principal moratorium. And you can see there are over a nine thousand such cases. We will continue to work in it and the government as a whole understand we need to support enterprise and protect jobs through multi-facets. So we are looking into other measures as well. Next, Christopher Chung.
So I liked about uh the first O O one. Are the uh the competitiveness of Hong Kong as a financial center? And Hong Kong claims that we are a financial center. And also I have a put a attention importance to the property and the check with your companies. And the H S B C announced that it will withdraw its final dividend. And a lot of the investor who rely on the dividends have been disappointed and felt this is a financial scam and cost lots of investor confidence, which undermined our image as a financial center. So how could we remedy that? All along, the Hong Kong investors have been hardcore fans of H S B C. And even during the financial tsunami, they support the share placement scheme. And Hong Kong have been the biggest earning base for H S B C, made up to twenty-three percent of the earnings. This cancellation of dividend not only led to great loss of investors and also injured the hearts of many. And H S B C claims that is following the instructions of the Bank of England. And the board of H S B C have really lobbied hard against this decision. Otherwise, it's very unfair to our investor. Would the Hong Kong government request the S F C and H K M A to intervene on the investor behalf and ask the H S B C?
to intervene on the investor behalf and ask the HSBC to retract its decision? Or uh have the stock in lieu of dividends? If the management had not discussed with the reg lobby with the regulatory authority, would it consider it a a misconduct shouldn't be considered a case of revoking the pay of the board members?
Well, a bank has been named that is HSBC. We know that it is quite common in Europe. And as the member has said, as a result of the capital requirements and liquidity requirements, regulators there may make certain sort of views, like the Prudential Regulation Authority of the UK as well as other regulators in the EU have major certain requests uh of the uh banks. So I understand that the Board of Directors held a meeting and then they took into account the operation of the bank. And they considered the re um the advice and the requirement of the Bank of England. So we understand that. And of course, I know that uh for people who have rely on this as the retirement income for individual investors and also for other uh retirement uh schemes, they do count on the dividends. So we do know about the impact on such investors. However, it is a matter of the regulatory arm of the uh Bank of England. And in fact, the group's headquarters is in London. So they do have to consider the requirement of the uh UK regulator. Now, I understand that for the Hong Kong MA as well as the SFC, they do keep up a dialogue with their overseas counterparts on regulatory matters as well as the impacts on the markets. So they do keep a dialogue. For individual cases, we would not make any comments in public. Thank you. Next, Mister Jeffrey Lam. Thank you, Chair. First of all, I would also like to say that earlier on, I made certain uh suggestions to the government as well as the Hong Kong MA in relation to a number of points. That is, we should lower the um capital uh requirements for the need to carry out counter cyclical measures. And then perhaps we can defer the repayment of loans and then we should also waive the penalties. And there should be uh better arrangements for the repayment of loans. Uh well, in fact, um for such rollovers and other suggestions, I'm glad to see swift response from the relevant officials. And in fact, announcements have been made within a few days' time. Well, after lowering the capital uh ratio, I think two hundred billion dollars can be made available to the banks and then this will help with giving out loans for SMEs. Uh I understand that they are facing a lot of difficulties. Well, for the uh manufacturing sector, for the export sector, they are not able to get paid even though they are able to carry on with their manufacturing process. So it has still to great blow to them. It will be good if all banks can uh come up with this arrangement. Today's in relation to the uh counter cyclical capital buffer uh requirement. The Hong Kong MA is aware of my uh re uh advice, but then other banks may not be echoing uh the effort. So I hope that the Hong Kong MA will take note of this development. It is most important to know where the priorities are and answer the needs of the uh public. Which is important to make sure that funds are available to the enterprises. If they cannot repay the bank loans, the banks may come and then um there will be a problem because um the enterprises cannot survive and then there will be bad loans. And then uh everybody will suffer in the case of a foreclosure. I understand that in relation to the payment of taxes, yes, we have been given an extended deadline. But then it is said that it is very cumbersome to apply for the postponement of the deadline. You need to fill out a lot of forms. Now, in fact, um it is a very urgent matter. The questions that you pose in your application form are very difficult to understand. Africans may not know how to answer your questions. Now, Secretary, you wrote in today's papers that you would not consider withdrawing the draconian measures in relation to the property market. Do you know that many citizens would like to sell their properties just to get cash to salvage their own business? Now, I don't think it's good to wait for the property market to go into a slump. I'm afraid many people will be forced to commit suicide. Well, I think it's better for uh us to get an answer to the first two questions. Mister Lau. Well, in relation to the Hong Kong MA, the positions of the uh SMEs and their liquidity. Well, the Hong Kong MA all along has been doing a lot. And in fact, we also encourage the Hong Kong MA to note the developments of the market and come up with the um assistance measures. And then for the draconian measures and what we should do about them, so as to save the market. We've been watching and monitoring the developments in the market. I understand that the property market prices are still on the high side and the affordability ratio should be sort of improved in a sense. So we don't see the need to withdraw the draconian measures, but still will keep a close eye on it. You talked about people wishing to sell their properties so as to um save their business. For us to support the enterprises, we are considering different measures. And we hope that by having such measures, we can help the enterprises to have their burden eased. Sorry, speakers off mic. Sorry, the speaker is off mic. Uh Mister Lam was trying to put in a suggestion. Mister Wu Chi Wei, two parts here. First of all, well, we are facing the economic downturn risks. The outlook is indeed very pessimistic. Well, for both SMEs as well as individuals, we need to keep some funds so as to face the upcoming economic um recession. Now, there are two points here. First of all, for SMEs and for the general public, there are three topics that are bothering us. And it's all because of the government policies. First of all, the M P F contributions, employers and employees contributions. I wondered if the government can come up with a strategy to help us. Say, for example, for a specific period of time, waive our contributions or pay the contributions on our behalf so that everybody can have a better cash flow. Secondly, the majority of the taxpayers have already paid the first installment of their tax um payment. For the second installment, can the government postpone the deadline for payment? In this way, we again we can have more cash in our pockets. And thirdly, as to the principal moratorium, both the Hong Kong MA and the government should consider seriously. That is whether the principal moratorium would affect the government and the Hong Kong MA's position. But at the same time, it will go a long way towards helping us with a better cash flow. So by allowing individuals and SMEs to have more funds at their disposal, please give a reply to my uh comments. And then for the global economic picture, um I can foresee major changes in the aftermath of the outbreak. But then in your opening remarks, Secretary, you're still talking about more cooperation with the mainland over financial um services. I think it is quite clear that the mainland relies on us as a channel for the availability of funds. And in fact, sixty percent of the capital in the stocks exchange have come from the mainland for the past decade. But would it be conducive for our development? I don't see the government considering leaving such a sort of um uh scenario. I think perhaps we need to consider new developments. What about investment in health-related enterprises? Development of vaccines and taking part in the anti-outbreak efforts? I think we should tap into new markets instead of just relying on the mainland enterprises. But then the administration must be proactive instead of remaining passive like what it has been doing all the time. I don't think we can afford to wait for opportunities to arrive on our doorstep because that would be futile. Mister Lau. There are many uh questions I will try to answer briefly. For the waiving of M P F contributions, I don't think it is allowed under the law as to payment uh of the contributions on behalf of the employees and employees. We have already said that for those making less than seven thousand dollars, when the E M P F platform is up and running, then this will be done. For the SMEs, we are aware of their burden in relation to the making of contributions. We are finding ways to help with the cash flows for tax um payment. Our stance is that we encourage those who are in need to apply to the I R D. We're trying to streamline the procedures so as to help the applicants to uh get the postponement. For the principal moratorium, I think I've answered that question. We've been encouraged this practice other than the home mortgage loans and others. Um I think the bank should be encouraged to consider adopting such a position. I think uh it is a matter of helping each other for our cooperation with the mainland. Indeed, many companies would like to come here to get listed, to raise capital, etc. The current term government places a lot of emphasis on inter uh internationalization. For our stock exchange, I think um a briefing has been given to the Financial Affairs Panel about going to the uh international market. For the health-related enterprises, we do encourage them to be listed in Hong Kong. So we'll pay special attention to such a development. Mister Wu. Well, you talked a lot about internationalization, but what about the opening remarks? I don't think this appears in his uh opening remarks. He would only talk about enhancing the cooperation with the mainland. In other words, he would still give priority to um cooperation with the mainland instead of going international. Why haven't you included it in your speech, Secretary? Our relationship with the mainland and the mutual access of markets. I think there are many opportunities for cooperation and we've seen results. And therefore, I've mentioned this in my speech. For internationalization, indeed, a lot of work is needed. To us end of last year, there were uh social events before the end of the year, we talked about relaunching Hong Kong. We talked about promoting Hong Kong into an international market. Uh you noticed that we need to do more in this regard because recently there are two organizations, that is the Heritage Organization, as well as Z E N uh who have been compiling indexes, though they are not credit rating agencies, have already have given certain views on Hong Kong, but I won't elaborate on that. So there is a lot of work to be covered. For my opening remarks, I have to keep them uh brief, so I cannot include everything. But then this is important, is disappointing for you to leave that out.
Next, Mister Holden Chow. A few questions for the secretary. First, on the principal moratorium, on different occasions, I mentioned that if the government is going to launch this uh hundred percent uh SME for uh loan guarantee scheme, the moratorium is supposed to be six months. I had asked that six months is not enough. I hope they can extend to nine to twelve months on discretionary basis. Because nobody knows when this epidemic will end. And even after this epidemic, you need to allow enough time for the SMEs to uh recoup their earnings and regain their financial footing. Such you really need to give them more time. I think the moratorium could be extended to nine or even twelve months. As for the eighty to ninety percent loan guarantee product, I heard from uh a lot of S S M E owners. If the moratorium uh can be more than six months, so that uh allow to buy more time to regain their earnings and footing is also for flexibility. And second question. And also the uh residential mortgages. We are really concerned is that now that the economy is really in deep water, we're most concerned that if the banks attempt to recall their loans or recall their mortgages. And if they start calling the loans, I'm worried that it will lead to dominant effect or led to the wave of negative equity. We think that uh we should not be calling the loans at this point. I hope that the government and HKMA have maintained good communications and closely monitor whether there will call uh the banks are call calling back the uh mortgages. And now the HKMA's press release it mentions that um he had approved uh twenty-eight hundred cases of residential mortgages for it, principal moratorium. Uh since that some of the owners have problem meeting payments and will apply for this. I hope that the bureau and um maintain good communication with the banking sector to en ensure that the homeowners uh to give them some breathing room and refrain from calling back their mortgages. So in order to prevent the Hong Kong economy from uh falling even further. And third question. On the HSBC decision to cancel its dividend. Of course, it would disappoint the small investors. I'm most concerned that have you assess the impact? And since the HSBC well had always have the impression of a leading bank. If I wonder if we have a ripple effect that led to other companies to uh copy from them or at this time and starting the trend of not uh giving dividends or led to some a wave of uh uh austerity. So at this challenging economic period, um this may worry the public even further. So I would like to listen from the bureau to whether they are prepared for this or anticipated this. Three question for secretary. Please be concise. And for the SME uh financing guarantee scheme on the app of the moratorium, while it's been proposed for six months, we need to monitor market conditions. And Mister Chow is also concerned that going forward, uh when will the economy recover? So we will, when necessary, we will uh adjust the implementation timetable. And on the mortgages, we noticed the uh phenomenon of negative Uh the uh phenomenon of negative equity and also on on mortgages. And the HKMA had done as part and the bank would also understand. That this all the twenty-eight hundred case of principal moratorium. Would we should encourage the banks or the banks are more than willing to help. The borrowers so as not to default on their mortgage payments. Or even uh more dire consequences, so we have been working on this. As for the dip bank dividends. It's unlikely that Hong Kong will issue such kind of instructions or requirements and the. And the the company, we need to consider their overall economy and their own circumstances in. Um on the dividend policy and besides the financial companies. Each company will have their own commercial decisions in considering the dividend policy. Next, Mister Xu Ka Fei. I'd like to talk about the macroeconomy. Well, you had this eighty percent loan guarantee product and now we have that ninety percent loan guarantee product. And we just passed it a hundred percent loan guarantee product at Latchco a few weeks ago. For the SMEs. Some of them had very high hopes through them for the a hundred percent loan guarantees product from our experience like during SARS. Uh it's just uh they the approval was easy, I hope the balance can launch as soon as possible. I know that some of the banks have started taking pre-registration before the formally launched. And for diff- uh all sectors are already in deep water. As for the eighty or ninety percent loan guarantee products, well, though, well, I know that the uh loan. Uh ceiling is much higher and currently the a hundred percent loan guarantee only get that to two million between meeting payrolls and rent. For the eighty or ninety percent, I have a cap of fifteen million or six million. I hope that I can talk to the banks so we can relax this ceiling. Well, if you continue. Uh to base on application on turnover and earnings. In uh proving the amount that this is impossible, you know, that the business over the past few months have been terrible. And also on the principal moratorium in February. Uh uh on the meeting with the financial secretary, we had raised this. Besides the businesses and in terms of mortgage payments. Well, a few days ago, I went to HKMA with the chairman, and HKMA had mentioned that some of the loans. For moratorium had approved. I hope that the FSTB can take the lead, asking the HKMA and the banks to. Proactively inform the borrowers of this option instead of waiting for them to call. You know that a lot of people have come into having a cash crunch and so do the other uh salary workers. Well, beside the business, but even those and offer manufacturers are in deep trouble. But now that the retail sector in abroad have created and a lot of the clients refuse to uh place new orders. And they're not able to ship their old orders and now their their money and capital is all tied down. I'm not talking about that if the government need to borrow money uh for them or. Or tie down the capitals and I hope that uh you can um allow. You can um ask for the um loan extension. And also on MPF. It's not really the time to save money and now that we need to take the money out to meet the liquidity needs. If the government is capable, the employer employee. Well, maybe the government can make contributions on their behalf. Uh you claim is financial capable, can we just suspend the MPF contributions and resume later? True as to uh offer some liquidity relief. First, on the eighty or ninety percent loan guarantee product. Because the bank will need to pick up the ten to twenty percent of the risk, thus in terms of approval. Uh they uh they will have their own uh concerns. And or we can uh we can look into rather than raising the cap. But now that uh we hope that a hundred percent loan guarantee product can help more SMEs. Looking in the past experience. Uh usually they need a uh a property as collateral and now some of the service industries. Uh could also benefit from this scheme as well. We also encourage the banks. Uh when vetting the application for a hundred percent loan guarantee product to fully cater to their needs. Because uh the HKMC is uh releasing loans on behalf of the government. And so the banks will also understand the need to support enterprises. And on the mortgage payments, the registration for the uh a hundred percent loan guarantee product uh will be launched very soon. And for the residential. Mortgage or principal moratorium, whether the banks will proactively contact them. I believe that the. The banks will contact their clients. And it's been a required report in the media. As for the MPF. Well, uh it's legally impossible to suspend MPF contribution, however, we also understand. Uh the employer have probably need their five percent contribution, thus uh we are looking into options to help the employers. Uh to uh providing uh some kind of liquidity to meet their payrolls. Next, Mister James Cho. On the principal moratorium. I believe there'll be the overall government's policy. Thus, uh the banks are under the oversight of the government. I recently uh have some cases for the secretary follow-up. Well, some have also had secondary mortgages from the developer. For some reason, the banks. Inform the borrower that since you have a second mortgage as well. The banks were not able to offer the moratorium to them. I wonder. That um they um the more. That uh you need to get a consent for both the first and second mortgage banks. Well, it's just um the either of them will not withhold or uh forsake mortgage payments. I wonder is really just an excuse or are they really bound by the mortgage confident? And saying that the banks need to claim that they need the second mortgage. Uh only to consent before allowing the moratorium. It and the banks say that you need to meet full payment for the second mortgage, but not for the not for the first one, which the bank will back to differ. And on MPF. Well, the government had launched uh multiple rounds of. Uh measures, while the self-employed have told me that. Well, they're not too confident of the government and don't feel that government could help them. They may not even file their tax returns. Maybe uh some kind of instructor like teaching music or sports and claim that um. The government assistance would not benefit them, however, some of them may have made some MPF contributions. And their money, she's got some money locked down there. If. Well, the some of the government reserves should be spent first before the money. But had the uh some would take the view that uh the government's help would be too late or felt left out. Well, some members of the public feel that uh they might want to draw into the MPF contribution. Well, some claim that the uh well, uh may they propose some kind of MPF contribution suspension. However, for those with MPF accounts, would you allow them to join the MPF? Or you you can use it as a collateral for bank loans. So at the end, you word that we are an MPF sell-off and further. Injured the stock market. Well, a lot of the members believe how the government couldn't help and some of want to draw into their own MPF accounts. I hope the government can look into this. I know that I may criticize for others. That means that you uh want to save money for the government because some to hold the view that they had give up on the government. I hope the government can respond.
Mister Lau. Um MPF as well as the uh loans. Well, for the self-employed. They do have a balance in the MPF accounts. You talk about uh whether they can withdraw the money. Well, as you have to know that there are restrictions under the law. It's only under specified um conditions that you can withdraw the money, say for example immigration. Well. While we are fighting the outbreak, we do understand that many people have different needs. As you can tell from our relief measures. We have already launched the first round of the anti-epidemic fund and there are um two hundred billion dollars available. We are sort of um looking at the needs of different sectors. We'll try to see what the government can help. Uh what the government can do to help. As to the first legal charge, as for the second legal charge, I would like to defer to the Hong Kong MA. Yes, please, uh Mister Chen. Well, for a time being. Um we haven't um got a view on that. Uh now that the member has raised this point, we'll follow this up. Next, Miss Alice Mac. Mister Chairman, a few questions from me. I hope you will allow me to um go beyond my time slot. As you have done for other members, for the financial intermediaries, I would like to go to. FSTB FS zero three five. I read the reply. I did ask a specific question, that is for the year. I want to know whether there will be resources to regulate the financial intermediaries. It is said that you don't have any specific money yet much for this purpose. I have to say that the market is in a poor shape. Citizens who did not have to turn to borrowing are no longer in such a position. In other words, we need to count on the government to carry out more inspections. I've noticed from the reply. Well, in fact, all the time, I don't think it should come under the company's registry. I think we should have a dedicated department or unit to look at the case of the moneylenders. It is unfair to have it house under the CR because uh it is about financial uh services. But anyway, um. Now that uh we have got it uh here, uh you need to step up the inspection and we aren't talking about routine inspections. Uh we have already received certain complaints and they have been suffering. As a result of the malpractice of the unscrupulous financial intermediaries. We got the largest number of complaints in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen with new measures in place. We got fewer in twenty eighteen, but then starting from last year, uh we are getting more and more such complaints. More and more citizens are having financial hardship and they have to borrow. Many of them have lost their jobs, they have lost their source of income. And therefore, banks and finance companies would not lend them any money. And therefore, the financial intermediaries call unscrupulous C A um opportunity here. And then they would be making calls, so you need to step up your regulatory work. There should be more inspection. You need to educate the public as to how they can screen out the unscrupulous financial intermediaries. Well, for public education, I think you need to give more resources to the organization taking up the public education efforts. I'm afraid that the unscrupulous intermediaries will see an opportunity to scam the uh citizens. A lot has been talked about um the principal moratorium. Other than businesses, I know that uh for the transport sector. Um like taxis, taxi drivers, they have been uh getting such an arrangement. But what about school bus operators? They are also uh under pressure to repay their loans. Well, perhaps the Hong Kong MA can look into the situation and try to see if the transport sector can be given a helping hand. For school bus operators, uh we are talking about individuals instead of a company running the school bus service. With class suspension, the school bus operators are not getting any business. And then they are limited by their license or licensing conditions. They can't uh use their school bus to provide service to, say, um employees instead of schoolchildren. So they are suffering a lot. They still have to pay for the overhead. So can the Hong Kong MA look at this? Uh I think a few banks are involved in uh giving our loans to such operators, so you can just talk to those banks. I've come to my final question. Suspension of contribution of MPF. We understand that employers are having a difficult time, but they still have to understand that. Even though the fees and charges are on the high side, it is still a matter of retirement protection for employees. I don't think we can lightly talk about suspending the contribution. If employers or enterprises have difficulties, I think the government should find alternative ways to help the employers. In the interest of time, please come up with a brief reply. For moneylenders, yes, I do agree. We have been doing a lot by way of having inspections and visits. But of course, recently, we have to focus our efforts on the epidemic. And there have been other events and so we have a fewer, we have a smaller number of inspections, but still the yearly total was four hundred. For the moneylenders and financial intermediaries. In the past, we looked at their malpractice and we issued a large number of warning letters. Will consider, we will continue to provide the resources needed. For principal moratorium, the member was right to refer to the school bus uh service. We do understand that the operators are encountering difficulties. We'll invite the Hong Kong MA to examine uh their needs and their aspirations. And then for the MPF um suggestion, we appreciate your point. We won't encourage employees to withdraw their contributions lightly. We hope that the government can do more by way of helping the citizens so as to tide them over their current difficulty. Instead of affecting their retirement uh benefits. The final member, the last member to ask questions in this session. I'll be quick. Secretary, I'm not going to ask my question. There's something very urgent that I need to raise it with you. Now, for the prohibition of gatherings, it is said that it will be extended beyond the first fourteen day period. My sector is suffering. Now, two weeks ago, I said that if you ask us to do so much. Then why don't you do something about our raise and uh short-term tendency um uh rate? Um I think uh instead of asking the landlords to half our rents, the government is in a position to waive such payments. Or demands. Um I've changed my mind. Now, I've heard that there may be another fourteen days after the first fourteen days. Professor Yun has been talking about the third wave or even the fourth wave of the outbreak. What about the government rent, the rates? As well as the short-term tendency payment? I think it's all uh payable to the government. For the anti-epidemic fund, now it is to be. For the anti-epidemic fund, now it is to be paid into the public coffers. You don't have to dip into your pocket to pay it out. So what about the second quarter between April and June? Can you not focus on our catering industry? Maybe the retail industry is also having a lot of uh problems. Last week, together with Mr. Peter Shu, we met the CE. I wonder if you can do something about the government range, the race, et cetera. Can you not just waive uh the charges and the fees for the second quarter? Focus on my uh constituency and without a maximum amount, please. Secretary, in our budget, we have already made certain arrangements. For the government uh range, um we are bound by the basic law. And there isn't anything that we can um do anything about it. Uh we cannot waive it, we cannot reduce it for rates. There are already concessionary proposals and then it is subject to a cap. So I understand that um for the non-domestic properties, we are already coming up with a higher amount uh for assistance for the first and second quarters. Secretary, I understand, I'm grateful to the government. I had tried not to make a request again, had it not been for the seriousness of the problem. Uh when I first made the proposal to the FS, the outbreak wasn't that serious, that's in February. Now that we are in the early part of April, uh I think it is getting um more and more serious and I hope that you won't cap the amount. And then for short-term tendencies that are facing their expiry date, I think you should just waive the payment. And then for the Hong Kong uh mortgage corporation, we have a representative here. Now, for the hundred percent guarantee up to two million dollars for the um loans, I think it should be overseen by the Hong Kong MC. I've been asked by the enterprises as to when they can make an application so that they can get the money. Mr. Lau or the Hong Kong MC? Yes, Hong Kong MC, please. Miss Liu, please, Miss Liu, please. Thank you, Chair. We are taking up the matter of the banks actively. It is hoped that uh the scheme can come into place in April. Well, we try to be as streamlined and as uh quick as possible. There's no need to come up with a formal credit assessment. All that has to be done is to do certain sort of verification, like the income, the business registration documents, et cetera. So it should be something that is uh quick. Uh for the Hong Kong MC, uh within three days of getting documents from the banks, uh will be able to complete the task. Mr. Tom Hjulm, just want to add a word here. Throughout uh the seventeen years when I first uh got it in in the past, it is said that you need the signatures of seventy-five percent of the shareholders because they are made liable for the repayment of the loan. I don't know whether I should pose this question in the following session. Now, for the FS, two million dollars, six million dollars and fifty million dollars are the various um sort of tiers. I think the purpose in the past was that um companies that could raise capital should be sort of um ex- excluded from the scheme. I don't know whether I should ask this question here or in the next session. I would like to lobby the FS to include them as well. What about the Hong Kong MC? What about the requirement to put signatures to the application form? Mr. Lau? A brief one, yes or no? Mr. Chairman? Well, it is a hundred percent guarantee guaranteed by the government. So um as I have explained, when it comes to the vetting, we have streamlined the procedures as much as possible. So it is not much different from eighty percent, ninety percent. And the insurance and the premium has also been waived. But then as a responsible government, we need to take everything into account. We need to take into account the whole picture. We need to look at the credit risk and therefore, we have come up with such a guarantee arrangement. Well, if we are to waive that as well, there will be the moral hazard and the risk um will pose a problem for us in uh responsible for public money. You've overrun and we'll start again in five minutes' time.